The flag of the nations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under oath, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone and a happy new year. First on our agenda is election of 2024 Chair and Vice Chair. I open up nominations for Chairman of the Council.
I'll start. I'd like to ask you to retain your chairmanship. I know you were asked to do that. I was in the room when you were and I fully supported. I feel the chair should support a two-year term, the first year to learn the ropes, the second year to utilize what you've learned. So I would like to nominate Jim Auger-Bryant for retaining his chairship.
I'd like to nominate Thor for the Chair seat.
We have a nomination first on the floor.
Nominations don't require second before board of.
Okay. Is there any other nominations for Chair? Hearing none, close nomination, Chair. Okay. I was nominated first, so take the vote. All in favor of Jim Auger-Bryant being Chair, raise your right hand. All those opposed the same? Okay, that's majority. I don't know if we even have to take the second one.
Oh, you probably should say you get to count.
Well, no, it's.
It's already one. It's already done. Yeah. Okay. Now we'll go to Vice Chair.
I'd like to make a motion or nominate Tom Warner for Vice Chair.
Okay, we have nomination of Tom Warner. Is there another nomination?
Nominate Thor for Vice Chair.
Okay. Thor has been nominated for Vice Chair also. In the order they were nominated, all in favor of Tom Warner being Vice Chair, raise your right hand. All those opposed the same? Okay, Tom, you're Vice Chair. The meeting, I'm gonna change the agenda just a little bit. We have both next on the agenda, board appointments and assignments. I'm gonna move that down in the order because we have the judges here and so forth and to talk about veterans officer and so forth, so I'm gonna move that down. Tom, do you wanna talk about that? That came the Personnel Committee and we have Paula and Judge Paul here.
Do you both of you want to come up?
Yeah.
Paul and Judge Paul, if you will. We had them in front of the Personnel Committee. I think we pretty much agreed that it needs to be done to go from part-time to full-time, but I just wanted him to come in to explain to the rest of the council what their thoughts on it. And I think Judge Paul, when you presented to the Personnel Committee, I think you reflected, was there 2,500 veterans in what the county? And they only served like 500?
Well, I think we actually have less. The question I got, or lesson I got from Larissa was there's 4,000.
4,000, okay. But we only serve a fraction of that.
Commissioner Banks was kind of spearheaded in this process.
Okay.
He was just in all the morning of the Personnel Committee. I'm gonna let Chad kind of start the discussion and I'm here to start. And we also got, is it Kim?
Cameron.
Cameron Lockner here. And I think Chad, Commissioner Banks can kind of shed some light. Maybe we can do this in a little bit more orderly fashion.
Whichever way you want to go.
But I do appreciate it. Thank you, sir. So for the numbers, Cam is actually with the State of Indiana. He oversees all the county veteran service officers. We're seeing a trend of VSOs going full-time to expand services for veterans. And uniquely, I think in the counties, our VSO works very closely with our Veteran Treatment Corps. And there's multiple things that they do above and beyond what makes some of the other county veteran service officers do. Cam, I'll invite you just to kind of get a snapshot about counties in the region that are going full-time and that sort of thing. You don't mind?
Yeah, absolutely. So Cameron Locker, I'm a Northeast Indiana District Service Officer. The Northeast District comprises of 17 counties. So I have managed those 17 offices in each county. I train the new VSOs. So Millie County, in the past few years, I've trained two new VSOs. Hopefully, that's true that we can correct with this adjustment to from part-time to full-time. The continuity of service is critically important for veterans. The scope and breadth of understanding that VSO needs to obtain, we're talking about millions of words of federal statute, state statute, we've got VSO often beyond just helping to fill out applications, which is probably what most job descriptions probably look at. Many cases, veterans create a bond with their VSO. It's their confessor. It's their social worker. It's their attorney sometimes. They see all kinds of services beyond just VA. It's the state agency. The VSO needs to know what churches offer services here in your community and even broader, what agencies, how that works. Does the gas company have a low-income pension plan? And will they defer payments for certain things? What amount of profits? Each postman in your county, which ones offer services to veterans, which ones don't? The outreach that's needed. So when you have a part-time office where VSOs are here conducting the application business, advising veterans on what services and benefits may be available to them, one of the benefits, if done properly by a competent professional VSO, we hope to obtain, can last 40 minutes, hour, hour plus, depending on the veteran, because we want them to understand what they've just been through, the process involved, what's to come. This isn't a one-stop thing where the VSO does the application, now receives the veteran again. There's gonna be follow-up services and care that's required once that veteran either receives benefits or possibly is denied, appellate processes are involved and that VSO needs to help that veteran in doing so. So with that and so much more, to the question that Mr. Banks brought up. So a lot of the counties, as we've seen this progression, this has a lot to do with IDBA and the State of Indiana putting more investment into veteran services here in the state. Some seven, eight years ago, we ranked lower than I think our governor wanted Indiana, the State of Indiana, to actually rank across the nation as far as, and there's a lot of metrics you can look at, so we're kind of all over the board, but overall. And so with that, we have reinvested, that's what District Service Officers position, to invest in that training. When I started in Wabash County, I've been doing this for 13 plus years. So when I started in Wabash County, I literally got P to D off. And so I had to seek out my own train. Fortunately, I changed mentors through time and actually put before the Wabash County Recruitment Committee, just as happened earlier, I believe, and tried to turn that office the whole time. And that same, and did that actual presentation. At that same moment, Allen County came and offered, you know, or gave me an offer to come up and work there. And so it was the kind of sure thing, the opportunity to work with even more veterans than I was at the time. And that wasn't really, the temperature of the county at that time wasn't known and it looked like it was probably gonna go that way. And indeed, it didn't when the new VSO came in the office, even though I've done all that work. I think some of that was, the VSO was looking for that kind of work and that's culture over the years where we get, you know, when you offer part-time wages with no benefits, you gotta find a special someone that is competent to do, that has secondary income and has resources for, you know, health insurance and things like that. So finding that perfect candidate that can then be that continuity service over the next 10, 15, 20 years is really, really difficult to do. Because most VSOs, for me, even at, even at part-time specifically, two years is when they start to get. Two years. Now, my training is four to six weeks every day, all day. And then they go through a lot of federal testing and things like that for accreditation, which is required by law. And so with this, we've seen a lot more, there's been an introduction with federal laws, the PAC Act, which hopefully many of you have heard of, which is kind of like when they introduced the Agent Orange list, it influx benefits and services requirements for those Vietnam veterans. And so this PAC Act for our post-ninety-five veterans, Afghanistan, Iran, has done the same, are also within intitiate, but we still have our War II and III and those same Vietnam veterans that, that Agent Orange list is ever expanding. So when they add new benefits, here's a whole new demographic coming in to need new services. And so now Wabash County, when I was there, exactly 2,999 veterans per VA's headcount. It's a little lower than that. We've seen that trend over time, but they're doing so. They have since gone full-time. And they did that, I'm gonna say, four, five years ago now. Similar size in, for the veteran population there in Wabash. Warsaw has been full-time for some time now. Allen County, I'm looking at the border counties, this is full-time, obviously. Huntington, again, similar size, I believe, has been full-time for quite some time. The North, Noble and McGrange, I believe Noble is, most of these offices operate, what I would call semi-full-time. They do by appointment nominees. Oh, great. So yeah, Huntington's full-time, Wabash County, Costco, Noble, Noble County is part-time. But I was saying Noble and McGrange often will work at where they are, they'll do appointments anytime through the week. So they're semi-full-time where they don't make that standard as set forth by statute, but they are gonna be in that office anytime they're needed. And most of my VSOs work women nuts on the block. And indeed, when you have that competent professional and, you know, driven VSO who understands what public services and understands the breadth that is needed to actually proplate providing services to the most valued treasure of this county probably has as our veterans, they need that extra time. I work weekends. I work my days off at Wabash. I work weekends in Allen County after a full 25,000 veterans as being a full-time assistant. So I never wanted for veterans to have work with, but when you talk about outreach and things like that's necessary, it's one thing having someone sitting in the office and veterans don't know that they're, or wasn't available to them, then you're not really capitalizing and providing that access. And VSO office is probably different than any other office county has. For one, it's one of the few, if not the only, or by far, generates the largest amount of economical impact to this county. Millions of dollars comes into this county because of VSO, primarily. But unfortunately, I would say because of the part-time status, a lot of your veterans are going outside. And when you have, even if the office being open mostly full-time, where you have an administrative assistant and the VSO is only full-time, when a veteran comes in to see the administrative assistant, can't do anything. They can't message and even point it. Then they have to come back. A lot of veterans aren't, either because of time or the courage it took for them, for some of them, because of the nature of the benefits they're following for, coming in to do that work. But with that, Fulton County is full-time. McGrange, again, it kind of works that model, full-time, full-time position. I could go on and on. I know you guys, I don't wanna take up too much of your time.
And if I could just add, the way I got involved, Commissioner Banks and I would chat in front of my truck one day. And we, why, okay, why add another full-time position to County Governor? I get it. But what I've seen from a practical standpoint, and I've talked to a lot of the other department heads that work around that, we've got an aging Vietnam veteran population. And we failed them before. And, and as Cam said, they are now able to get more benefits. And I can't tell you how many stories I've heard of them making their way up to the, to the office, only to find out that it's closed. And one of the things that I want is I want accountability on behalf of the VSO. When you've got a part-time person that's doing outreach and they're here and they're there, I mean, what I want, a full-time good person that's gonna be there, that's gonna have a calendar, that's gonna have published office hours, so a veteran can go online, look at the website, or they know when they can come up and just walk in, they can make an appointment, they know that somebody's gonna be there to service them. If they do get up there and, and they don't have an appointment and the person, the VSO, is saying, my veterans court, they're not there, there might be a published schedule, so they know when they can come back. They don't have to go to the assessor's office or the auditor's office and say, hey, you guys know when the VSO's gonna be in? And those poor folks, they don't know. So I think, but one of the things I'm looking for with this, and I think is important, is accountability. And also, we can candid on this a little bit, we were at war for 20 years. We have a lot more veterans than what we've ever had. We don't even realize. We're just scratching the surface with my Veteran Treatment Corps, even identifying veterans in our county. And if they, and I'm on the bird pit registry, but I'll be honest with you, it took me four times to get through that questionnaire in like three hours. So navigating the system, I consider myself pretty good at that sort of thing. So navigating that system is very intimidating. And so when you've got somebody that's earned the benefits, that worked hard, they raised their right hand, they've sacrificed, and then they, like I said, they get the courage because some of these folks don't trust the VA. And they didn't, and for good reason. But I think we've got good people working through the VA now. There's a lot of veterans that they're at. But I just really think that, that we owe the veterans for that accountability and we also look for the services. And that's what got me involved with Commissioner Banks asking. So I hope you'll consider this. And I didn't even think about the amount of money that comes into the county. When you look at VA home loans, when you look at the VA benefits, when you look at the VA services, it really does have a value added. So I just hope that you'll take that into consideration, the Commissioner's request to make this a full-time position. And Jim and I, we had a great conversation about early government, about, you know, we're not, this isn't a situation where we're gonna get a slippery slope, we're gonna be back here next year asking for a full-time staff or any of that nature. We just want accountability for the veterans. We want somebody there that's gonna answer those questions and help them navigate that system. And right now, this is what we have, it's just not working. And again, I think it's accountability. And I really want that accountability. I hope you consider that.
You want to add anything?
The only thing I would add is that, you know, my involvement is limited as far as Veteran Treatment Corps. But of the 12 to 13 that we're serving, the needs are great. And that's, that's a very small number compared to 4,000. So if you can, that all justify and move forward to this, that can be a great service for the county. They deserve it. They've earned it. So.
I'm pretty sure the Personnel Committee agreed we need to do this, but we want them to be in front of the council. Yeah. Do you want to fill in anything, Jen, on this?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. So I guess, like I said, the Personnel Committee agreed that we need to do this. So I guess we just need to get the consent or a vote of the council to go ahead and proceed with the full-time position.
I'm gonna go along with the Commissioners and Personnel Committee's recommendation on it. Being a recipient of VA benefits, I understand exactly where you're coming from as far as the paperwork and everything with the new computer systems. We have a whole new world of veterans out there now from Iraq and Afghanistan. My history is prior to that on it, but I will make the recommendation and make the motion that we accept it as a full-time position.
I'll second that. I think our veterans are one of our most important assets to this country. It would be a disservice not to honor our request.
Okay, I got a motion from John, a second by Nick, that we have a full-time position. I'll open it up for discussion. Do we, do we get this position factored, Jen? That how?
It's currently factored as a part-time position.
Right.
We can run it back through, but likely it'll stay, stay where it's at, just at four. But we can run it back through with.
What's council's pleasure on that?
Do we need to run it back if it's already factored? I mean, the wages on the factoring are already gonna be set in place.
Only if there are additional duties to be added, but I don't, I don't see the need to, no.
The duties will probably stay the same, right?
Yeah.
I hear you, Jen. Yeah. So I agree with Thor. I don't see any reason to put it back through, but you can go off of whatever path is on that now.
Yes, just update the job descriptions.
Okay. Everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Good. Then this position, if I understood right, and Judge, when we talked, I think, Rob, I think you were there, and we talked about who's gonna monitor this position?
Yeah, this would be, this would be directly accountable to the Commissioners. We discussed and Rob and I got a great discussion and you and I had a great discussion. You can throw Chad in on that, on the accountability of the factor and how that person's gonna be accountable to the Commissioners for their time and for their duties.
Right. And that's what happened with the part-time historically.
Yeah, and I think the full-time position kind of felt fulfilling in the fact that once you have a full-time position, offer a competitive compensation package for that position, you're gonna get the kind of talent with the education and experience that we need in that office, hopefully long-term. Just the investment that I put into the office and will continue, but that's what I do, will help guarantee that accountability, that professional standing, and hopefully kind of bring those really kind of veterans back to care for services.
Okay, any other comments? I guess we'll determine, determine a wage on it and.
I, yeah, we have a wage. What, do you know, Sam, what the path for is? It's approximately 49,000. I don't have the exact.
We went over that in Personnel Committee meeting and it is, I've got it right here. Written on a piece of paper. It's 49,000 and with benefits close to 70.
So we want to prove that with this?
Yes, I'll amend it to those information that Jim just said.
You're all right? Okay. No further discussion? I ask for the vote. All those in favor of John's motion of full-time veterans officer, raise your right hand. All those opposed the same passes we have.
Don't get too emotional about most council meetings.
Appreciate what you got.
BJ. Jen, you might come up and.
Morning.
So you got your backup today?
Sorry.
I see you got your backup today.
Oh, that's the primary. Just here. Good morning. I am before you today on classification request, review, action request for my employees. Based on empty factors, I was in force the last year to develop, I did appear before the Personnel Committee to study more factors. And I want to thank you all for your positive response there. And just to explain to the council as a whole, I'm gonna take the opportunity to explain what, what we're asking for. We have two positions, one of which is our receptionist, who has taken on a scale of role in my office with the increase, takes over all cross-직원 offices, from state to the experience. She has also taken on additional duties with respect to our child support division and our child division, which she has become the coordinator for archery here in the county. I had a feeling to say she coordinates all of my employees, particularly the children in the family. And just as a complete aside, I'm relieved that there is, I think this is important for folks, you know, we do have a four-day trial beginning with a circuit court. And if any of you that are interested in what we do, they all know at least kind of catch a portion of it, because it's, it's, I think it's really important to put the community over the top of that, my populace. This is a terrible case, so it's probably serious certification for the.
Yeah. Can you people, your DJ back there?
Yeah.
Please.
I am around being loud. But in any event, we do have a four-day jury beginning against the new average. I don't think we, I didn't believe about this community. It's an important aspect of what, what we do, probably the most important thing I do. So that's a, that aside, our receptionist, Ms. Carol, who's still with us, is gonna be a new student. This will be moving her from a come-up three position to a come-up two position. And you know, in this as well, all of our front office staff across training, all of our front office staff can pick up in the event that there is enrollment, which we have, history of the last month or two, we should, we have. So she's capable of doing a suretime basis, all the other roles I need to accomplish. She also, because of the increase in the caseload, an increase in our superior report, I should have asked you, I'll just stick around to this. She's also taking on some additional roles with respect to managing that base layer. So our request is you should be first on come-up three to come-up two, to reflect that increased caseload. The second.
Can I jump in?
Absolutely.
Real quick before we go on to the second one. Can you explain to us what position handled those responsibilities before and were they just not being handled?
They weren't really handled.
Yeah.
So who, how to get another? So in my case, particularly as it relates to jury selection matters and managing our jury selection program, it wasn't, it wasn't gonna happen or something that just got left alone and undone. And so it's been a real burden to me as I worked some cases to have that. And specifically, the duties there include, you know, you receive the questionnaires to fund this regarding potential jurors in the county. And I need assistance. I need some management process of sorting those, helping me select the good jury and use that person for me. And prior to that, it just wasn't done. If it is on an ad hoc basis, we did that not as important. If you can get a term grade, if you couldn't, you add. So it's a, it's a critical function for a trial lawyer, criminal trial lawyer. And we've got an additional criminal trial lawyer in the office now, four. And so having that as a service has allowed us to keep really, to your point, to raise our criminal. That's, that's one of the big ones. And then also just administratively, our four-D, our non-support caseload that remains specific, but we've added some duties, four duties to speed the intake of the public to correct case work. So we, that's a smaller part of it, but that's still a part of it as well. And that's more of a efficiency thing. And I think it's gonna aid and speed getting people, the general public, to the right place that they need to do quicker, resolve our cases quicker. I hope for that and get the intake process on people who are receiving support for their defendants. Move that along faster, hopefully. That's gonna turn it. Any other questions on, on that particular slot? I would also point out that where I have media, Denise is a long-term employee. Well, she's applied the negative, which she doesn't. But she's been with us quite some time, creating herself feeling important for it. The second one is record our superior word administrator. And I changed the title of that position a number of years ago because that's effectively what it is. In the superior report, that was the superior report when I started. Let me do probably higher here to give this. When I began, in the superior report, there were approximately 700, maybe 800. We're now up at 1,205. So much so that I came to this body and requested permission to hire an additional lawyer who will sign enough to grant you that position. That has worked out very, very well for our office. And I think it's really aided in resolution cases. And I think it's in keeping with the national trend, the number of lawyers for the population of this size, for the number of criminal cases. And what we did not do at that time, and I did not ask at that time, is, and what I did not consider was that in adding a lawyer, I added more responsibilities to the person who's responsible for administering that court on a daily basis. So in addition to the caseload, I've added another full-time So in addition to the caseload, I'd added another full-time professional. And so this is reflective, my request is reflective of those additional duties and that additional workload. And as I explained to Personnel Committee, one of the things I stated in the end, the Prosecuting Attorneys Association has done is look at staffing levels in prosecutors offices. And understand, I only discovered this after I made the request, it's looking right over the request, but it is in keeping with my request. And interestingly, with Ryan Earl and Shield, is the firm that prosecutors came to help them understand staffing levels in prosecutors offices, and they can be presented with this here in this county, to make the determination. And what they found was that for the number of cases that a county of our size has, the appropriate staff and the appropriate classification on the for this particular position, our Superior Report Administrator, is, is a path four. Currently, staff that have come on two level. And we are asking that to be reclassed to a path four. And I would point, and it should be in your pack, if it's not, there is a memorandum from West State November seventeen that is in agreement with that. Or you should have been provided to the gym, I don't know if that needs to go to, I know it's a personnel committee. We have, we have it up there. So if you wanted to add, I think they do understand that the request is in mind and in keeping with what our personnel departments, many personal. So, not, not massive changes, but necessary changes and deserved changes for these employees. I would hesitate to come before this body and ask if I had employees that were, hadn't been here long-term, didn't show an aptitude, didn't show a desire to continue to improve and do the good work that our office does. But these two ladies in particular have stated themselves recently and throughout their time in the office. And I feel very comfortable that they're willing to be long-term employees. And so just on a personal, they've introduced our office. And that's really, that's really the request. So if I can answer any questions, I would be happy to do so.
Questions? BJ, Tom, do you?
The Personnel Committee didn't have a, didn't vote or decide what to do. We were out in the air what to do with it, so we haven't made a decision yet.
But we did have a question on, or we were pondering. With the, with the job description changes for these two ladies, is that going to cause any other job description changes further down?
Any downstream? No, it wouldn't be. This is, the additional duties have been locked into those two spots. So it isn't a situation in which other responsibilities would go under pushdowns.
I know that was a concern we had after we had met Personnel, and you would love.
Yeah.
We thought, oh, we'll ask for this.
Yeah, 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 no, I don't anticipate anything like that. Our decent employees are dedicated to those slots, the work is dedicated to those slots.
Thank you.
So much of additional appropriation, do you anticipate for your budget for this year?
Four point six million dollars now in Idaho, not long. What I'm showing in this is that... I haven't had that under specifically, Councilman, what did you have, is it twenty?
Change salaries?
It would be only, it would be, yeah, it would be only changing salaries, any terms for any? If your question is, have I asked for any other budgetary changes, I have no.
No, related, specifically related to these two changes, on the difference between the existing and the new, factored out over the course of this budgetary cycle.
Well, I can tell you this, that...
If you stall for just, and keep talking. I'm just, Jen's going to...
She's not a calculator.
They have it, she's every... They're both approximately two thousand, approximately four thousand.
Four thousand for the year, for each of both positions.
Well, the paper you handed out, one was four, and one was two. Forty-five ninety-six, and so say six thousand.
Sixty-six.
Yeah, so six thousand would be the difference in your budget.
Okay, that's...
Yeah. I mean, my feeling is, you know, we hate to keep doing changes, but with the number of cases from eight to twelve hundred, somebody's got to pick up a little slack and do a little more work, so.
That is the case, and I think, thank you, Councilman, and I think that the, I think that, I think the Personnel Committee asked some very good questions about that case. So that's just a pure criminal case load, that that figure that I gave you. It doesn't count things like search warrants, if you've seen enough tick in because of some of our larger cases, or drug dealing resulting in death cases. That's a whole other separate tally that numbers in hundreds. Each of those cases requires generally a significant amount of time. So I, there are other pots of cases that have increased just as much. I focused on that one, but...
Any additional questions, comments? Your pleasure. We have two positions refactored in front of us. Do we want to take them individually, or set, or together?
Make a motion, we approve the Assistant Office Administrator from COMA two to PAT four, the increase of four thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars.
Okay.
And the second one was the forty receptionist, currently a COMA three to COMA two salary increase of one thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars.
I have a motion by John, and second by Thor, that we basically approve both these positions. Further discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, say in the passes. Thank you. All of them.
So I'm here today just to finalize the process regarding the two positions you approved the last meeting. But because we were awarded the grant after budget sessions, I had to, I obviously couldn't approve the salary limits or the additional appropriation until today. Both positions, one is a full-time nurse, one is a Veterans Treatment Court Case Manager, both funded by a grant, which includes your salary benefits. Both individuals that accepted the positions understand that if the grant is not extended, that the one will return to part-time, and the other one won't exist unless it's secured. We should have additional appropriation and salary limits for each position in your cap.
And one thirty-seven thousand nine forty-two with benefits.
Yeah, so, yeah, the nurse is the eighty-seven nine forty-two wage and benefits. And then the Veterans Treatment Court Case Manager is a total of seventy-eight four sixty, annual wage forty-nine six forty.
Jen, any comments? Tom?
No, I mean, it's all grant money, and she explained to him that if the grants stop, then that job is gone. I just appreciate everything you do to get all the grant money possible for Wether County. I mean, that's got to be a full-time, like, everyday job, and stuff.
We have a really good county that, as you said, we have a great group of people at work in the system. And I think they know that Wether County is pretty much united. If we ask for a grant, that we're going to try to do a best to make it successful. And that's not just one person, that's the entire community, so it makes it easier to have that.
When we took the tour with the last month, we went through there. The nurse, I was just so impressed with her, how bubbly and just, she wants to get in there and go, which is great. I mean, I'm glad you could get a grant, do it full-time.
Don't really like that. We don't know what we did about her work.
Yeah.
But she is great.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? We have an additional appropriation resolution ordinance. It's got them both combined, for a total of one hundred and sixty-six thousand four ten. Your pleasure.
I make a motion that we approve both of them. As long as the grant money is there, grant money goes away, you have to look at different funding.
I have a motion by Kim. Is there a second? Second by Joan, that we approve both appropriations for a total of one hundred and sixty-six thousand four ten. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, say in the passes. Thank you. Mark?
I'm here to ask the request for hundreds of funds from twenty-fourth Street to twenty-fourth. The amount of seventeen thousand three hundred and eleven dollars. And this would be for replacing the president of the rooftop unit here at the government center. We have a cannon failure right at the end of December. The compressor failed. The number one compressor, the two compressors, the number one failed. And the cost to replace that, you know, the quote there, seventeen thousand three hundred and eleven dollars. At the time I had the quarter, I did not have the insurance for the warranty number, which I do have that now. Five-year warranty on that compressor is one thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars. I could take that out of this year's funds. But I was hoping I could get this covered from last year. I had money left over. And Brother didn't want to take that seventeen thousand dollars here right off the bat.
How much did you have left over, Mark?
It was nineteen thousand. In that account.
Is it easier for you as the auditors, is it easier to encumber this money, or just to let it reflect the county general and do an additional appropriation out of this year's county general?
I would think it would be easier to...
Okay, thank you.
Only one.
Yeah, I just have the one for the...
But I mean, nobody, no other companies do it, or just this is one we usually use?
This is the contractor we've always used for this facility in jail. We, like I said, it happened right at the end of those, seven thirteen, the date of the...
How old is the entire?
Yes.
That is old as the building is?
Yeah. This would be our third compressor on this building, and it is the same compressor. That's compressor one. The first one was in twenty thirteen. It was an electrical failure. Determined it was lightning in nature, insurance covered that one. Twenty seventeen, it had a mechanical failure. We replaced it, we did buy it under Kim's recommendation, we purchased the five-year warranty. Fortunately, it's year six, and it's failed again.
The reason why they're failing is, is big enough? Not a big enough unit, or?
No.
Compressor, or?
The program is set up on the building management system to where compressor one is always lead. So it's the first one to always come on. Compressor two is lag, compressor one can't keep up, compressor two keeps on. So the amount of hours on compressor one is four times the amount of pressure two.
Okay.
Put it in rotation, I'm a little leery to do that at this point, because if we put it in rotation, we're just going to run compressor two a lot harder than possibly lose that one. So ultimately, my recommendation is going to be, let's get this replaced. We need a budget for a new rooftop unit. We're talking several hundred thousand dollars. But worth eighteen years, or nineteen years now, people that can get it up. And it does have a hundred twenty-two, which has been obsolete, it's freely expensive. When we had the electrical failure in the compressor, we had to replace it, can't reuse it. This is a mechanical failure, we reused R twenty-two. But it's, we need to be considered replacing from this age group. But we're not going to get through next summer if we don't replace this compressor. Since I had the money leftovers, like I said, I didn't want to take a hit of that size going right into twenty-two.
Was this the equipment repair leaving, flying in?
Yes.
So the ending balance was nineteen thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars, maybe?
I know we talked last summer about all our facilities and what was going to be needed over the next few years. And you told me there was no fluff, no number, I remember that. So we need to be aware of the depth of those requirements. Okay, any other questions, comments for Mark?
I guess I would like to see more than just the most jobs like this, this is a larger model. And we really, I mean, we don't know if this is a good estimate or a bad estimate, what the playing field looks like out there, Mark. This is something that is an emergency. I mean, you know, you got one compressor running, have you ever had the work done? Sorry, have you had the work done? I don't know. So I mean, is there time to put it out for other estimates? I mean, that's, that's what I would like to see, if you have the time, Tom.
I'll go to say this, the amount of time before I had to have it advertised, I didn't have much of a limit. I'm comfortable with this number, but I can turn to you if there's quotes. I don't know if that, does it cover that amount, or?
Is that the original company that put it in there?
The last one, the one before that was...
I agree. I think we should have other codes, just to see how they follow place. They should be pretty close, and if they're not, it's a reason for it.
Or do you want to go ahead and encumber this amount? Mike, if it's less than that, then we'd have it covered. If it's, if it's more than that, we'll use this amount anyway.
So they can actually encumber that amount, but not permission to spend until the comparables come back to us for approval?
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Thor, that we encumber this amount, but we do not release the money, prove the final money until we get the quotes back, second by Kim. Any further discussion? Call for votes. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Get my agenda here. Yeah, my... Now I got it. Okay, we'll go to... Okay, we'll go to council appointments and then a council assignment of committees and so forth. Y'all got a copy of the appointments? And I don't know if we've heard from any of these in camera. Maybe you can help Dave Calhoun on the alcohol beverage. Is he up for reappointment or is he good through?
I think he's, I think the twenty twenty-four, I believe, in my opinion, from past indicates that he's good through that year.
Okay, so as we look down through there, if this would happen, in case, I know we just appointed Kelly last year, so that's probably correct. So all these, Nikki, remember that appointment, so.
I see one on the Whitley Library Board and the Chair Busco Library Board that would need to be addressed.
Yeah, I, I thought we did Alice Nicodemus last summer.
But I think that she was, wasn't she coming in on the end of somebody else's term or interim or?
I think she's been on there for a while.
I think so too. I thought, I thought each board, library board came to us to give their recommendation. Isn't that how we did, did it before? I thought they would come and give their recommendation who they would like to be appointed on there. No, I thought they did anyway. Sure, I remember the Busco South Willy coming in at one time.
Or they sent a letter.
Or they sent a letter, maybe, yeah. But I know they have a new library board president this year, South Willy, so maybe he's not quite up to date yet. I don't know.
Well, it looks like right now it just affects two people, you know, perhaps, or two boards. We could contact them.
And reach out to the boards and have their recommendation.
Or make sure it's correct and, yeah, get to see if we get a recommendation from.
That includes both Chair Busso?
I'll, I'll take care of South Willy board, reach out to them, okay?
And your chair, Mr.
Okay. Report back at the next meeting on that. So those appointments, the rest of them look to be okay unless peabody in September on their libraries. Okay, then on the assignments on county council, don't know if we don't, no one wants to change, possibly leave them the same.
I'm happy with what I'm doing at this time.
I'm also. Okay, Joan?
I'm fine.
Nick?
Yeah.
Okay, Kim?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Tom?
I'm okay. We need to make one addition on it, and in the past JD AI, I'll stay on that.
So do I have a motion to leave? The appointment's the same and make sure that John's on the, the additional one there.
I make a motion, all the assignments, all the appointments stay the same.
Do I have a second?
John's second.
Second by Joan. Further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed. Thank you. Okay, next tablet discussion.
Be curious to know how much money we spend on paper printing just for these meetings here, just for us. I know, I know you don't know that.
They post it.
Exactly. I can't imagine it would be less than what Kami had found for a cost per tablet. Might be a larger expense at first, but over the years, it will definitely pay for itself, in my opinion.
Well, I did have a question on the per tablet cost. How, what's the lifespan of those tablets? Because we have departments coming for us that say it's average, both three to five years. So are we looking at three years per tablet that needs to be replaced? Or what's the average timeframe on that?
Yes, it depends on the make and model of tablet.
Because that would really determine the savings.
Yeah. Do you have any idea, Kim?
I don't, I don't know if you have the one that was done in August of last year. It ranges from seven tablets at seventeen hundred and thirty-five dollars, which is two forty-eight a piece, to forty-eight hundred and ninety-one dollars, or basically seven hundred dollars a piece, is what, that wasn't what you have got.
No, it's much lower than that.
Yeah, but that's what we have Tiffany gave me.
Is there additional cost to maintain the software on it, or any?
Feel like your phone.
And I had a question for you. One day you did bring your laptop in. How did that work?
Just connect to the wifi.
I know, but why didn't you ever do it again? You only did it once.
It was for work. It was a work laptop. I didn't feel it was appropriate to have it. I don't remember why I had it then. Oh, I remember. It was specifically for that because I didn't print out our packet. And you can, I mean, you can do it online. Tiffany sends it through email, so you just open the attachment. It's.
I just wondered.
No, that's fine. I mean, in my opinion, it, as long as we didn't go wild on the cost per tablet, it would pay for itself in a short time.
I also look at it as a tool that we can go back and draw information out very easily rather than trying to remember where you left a certain paper, go through a pile of papers. There's a lot of stuff that you get that isn't just recycled in the meetings and stuff that you need to hang on to and have at your recall. And I just think, so I'm a dinosaur. I'll admit that when it comes to computers and technology and stuff like that, it takes me a while to learn the process. But I think it's a time, it's time as council that we got into the tech age and stopped printing out everything, had it accessible to us on a tablet at our meetings or wherever else you might need to take that information.
Other thoughts?
I'm still old fashioned. I like the paper. I'm sorry, Thor. I know, you know, trying to keep track of it, but I mean, I scribbled the whole meeting on different things here, and I can't do that on tablets.
Yeah, you can. You can take those on your tablet.
I, I still like the paper. I'm just old fashioned, sorry.
Hey, your pleasure.
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with purchasing tablets and getting them set up so we can start to receive our packets and other information and emails and any kind of correspondence through that course rather than printing it out and having it mailed to us.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Thor, second by Nick, that we proceed forward with finding a tablet for council. Any further discussion?
I have further discussion. I understand that they want to do the tablets. I'm not for the tablets, but I am willing to offer a negotiation on that. Why don't we take the people who want the tablets, be the experiment for them to see if they work out, and those of us that don't, continue as we are until we get a consensus of how well they work? I think that's better. Because I don't, I, I'm not for it. I'm, I'm with Tom. I write all over mine, and then I keep out of my packet what I feel is pertinent that I may want to come back to. But then again, we have all our information sent to us electronically, plus the packets, which I refer back to electronically now, a year or two ago. So I have that access. I think that's a fair assumption without it being, you know, I don't know how the vote's going to go, but if some people are adamant, they would really prefer it, oh, they should try it.
Do the commissioner have tablets?
We actually have laptops.
Okay.
Obviously, do day-to-day operations as well, so.
Okay.
She has laptops. I like Joan's idea of opt-in, opt-out. If you know you're not going to use it, why, why spend the money on it? And I will also note that anyone who has a computer or tablet, really kind of has to take annual training, so that's something to consider as well. There is some training hosted by, through OREOS by, I don't remember, but we take training on fifteen stands and website DMS sort of thing, so.
Do you guys take yours home quite a bit?
I do.
I, I thought you didn't, Chad. Rob, you shook your.
I access my email on my phone, so I don't take it home. Teresa does take hers back.
And I think your comment's correct. If you're not going to use it, why lie?
Yeah, I have a problem. You know, commissioners will gladly purchase these, but if you're not going to use it, you know you're not going to use it, I don't, I would hate to spend the money on it or
How about if we do that consideration where those that want it, want it, and if it works out and they give a report saying it's great, if I prefer this, and then if we change our mind, just have it open-ended and say if we want one, we can say we would like to try it at a later point.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree.
And because if there's no sense of buying something for you if you're just not ever going to use it, if it just splits us, that's, that's crazy.
And you may not like it, and you may like it.
Oh, I know. I'm going to love it because I can store all the information out at my fingertips. And the other thing too that we might want to think about is Freedom of Information Act. If you're using your personal computer or your cell phone or government business and someone does a request, they could possibly get things on your phone when you don't necessarily want to be intermingled. So that's, that's a consideration that.
But we need to remember, you need to remember, it's just a赠送给package. So those with the computers, they won't get the packets.
That's right. They won't either.
I think it'll be a good experiment to see.
Along with that, with the new webpage, we're going to start using the agenda builder that we're paying for, and the agenda builder will have links to every document that's presented. So that's, that's as well.
So Thor, are you going to amend your motion or change it or?
Well, my motion didn't really call that everybody has to have one, but I guess my motion could be stated as that I think that we should move forward with getting these tablets, but not to make anyone get one if they're not, if they don't have any intention of using it.
Create it often.
Yeah.
So we would want at our next meeting.
But it should be quoted also. It's what the $100, $100 to $150.
Well, that's for what Kami, I think, found, but we had these quotes also.
We got to have a price.
Well, yeah, that's what I mean. Maybe this probably needs to be updated. It was all, it said, fact, said after seven days, maybe come back with.
You know, I don't want to vote yes on this, and then they come back, and I'm not saying that's happened, but, and it's not what we expected on the hundred to $150 tablet.
I have to question the quality on a $150 tablet, though, to be honest with you.
That was like a cyber sale. So that was like extremely discounted. It's like a $700 tablet. So are we looking more at us than $100 per tablet?
That's a pretty good deal.
I will amend my motion. I have to exceed $10,000 if you can have Chad to make the purchase.
So I will note too that Kami's done a great job recently since the switch from Ford, from Preferred IT to OREOS, we've created a government account with Dell. So we are getting our, our computers, tablets, that sort of thing, deeply discounted. We're paying far less than what we were when we purchased. So, yeah, and we make every effort to be rigorous and to make wise spending decisions.
To be 100% honest with you, I would prefer a laptop over a tablet. I think it's way more functional, the, just the touch, you can't type. It's ridiculously difficult to type on a touchscreen. If you can get a tablet, I'm sorry, a laptop cheaper than you can a tablet, I would recommend that.
I would probably be more happy with that, too.
Sure. Happier. So you asking for the dollar figure now or just he threw out 10,000?
That's part of it.
Much as any of these quotes.
I just don't think they know what it's going to be. I'm just going to put some cap on it, so, you know.
Maybe you can just come back, Chad, at our next meeting and put some figures.
Sure.
That's fair.
Nick, would you want to work with?
Yes.
With Chad and?
It's easy. Just connect Dell and government accounts as well, since it's basically what happens to laptops.
Yeah, great. How's that? All right.
Is there, can we come to a consensus if it's under a certain amount that he can move forward with it, not wait a month to come back to it? And then, of course, I think we need to probably decide who wants them and who doesn't. Great.
We got one person saying computer laptop.
Yeah, now we've got a whole nother thing going on. I think we need to wait.
Price. Just depends on the price.
Yeah, why don't we just get that? We'll get it out to you and then y'all can let us know what you're thinking.
So drawing your motion.
Well, my motion is to proceed with it, so I'll amend the motion to give, to not make a purchase at this time, but the motion still would stand.
Okay, we have a motion, second, Nick?
Yeah.
We're going to have discussion after that? Because I'm going to go now until we have the information.
This motion is just to move forward and give commissioner permission to search the information, get his prices, and move forward into towards.
So your motion is then to stop the purchase?
No, but he still can't exceed $10,000 in his investment account already.
So we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed. Personnel committee, Tom?
We don't have anything else right now. We took care of the, the two that we had on our agenda last month. We don't have anything else, right? Johnson says we're good.
Okay.
Well, we have a meeting now. Okay.
Okay. We don't have. Andrew Park?
Say that to the paper. Bones that are, sent there in your report, bones that have been in discussion for the seven years I've been working there. There's always a question about what they're doing in our county, what their performance is. They give us these annual reports, so I thought I'd share. And I will tell you that the commissioners are currently exploring the process to change our community mental health provider. And what it really comes down to is, I would say, just expanding the choice so that counties can have a choice who they do instead of the state mandating. But the state will have to approve our switch if, if we make it. So it's, it's a long process. We have to request with the state that we can change our commitment to our provider. And if approved, then we are in discussion with our center, our Q, the April Health. So I wanted to share that with you and also not sure if you guys saw the lit distribution for 2024. That came out recently. I'll note that the GL lit for the correctional facility is up to 2.3 mil. If you'll recall, when the tax was first passed, it was to generate about 1.7. So that tax is doing very well. So I made note of that just to let you know that we're in a good place with our funding for our GL project, the taxes doing what it was intended to do. I wanted to let you know that we met with. Um, I wanted to let you know that we met with Mark Kinnon from Ilb recently. And he let us know that we will see a nineteen percent decrease on our workman's comp, our workers' compensation insurance. We have a safety committee and Jen is involved in that and it's doing its job. It's it's serving its purpose. We've not had any incidents. And so we're seeing that nineteen percent decrease, which is huge. He did let us know also that we should expect an increase on our auto property liability insurance. I'm sure you all are experiencing that with your own insurance policies at home and on your autos. So I just wanted to let you know now that we'll we'll probably see. Another thing is I want to let you know that since our switch from preferred IT to four E O S in two thousand twenty three, we've saved about one hundred and eight thousand dollars, which is which is significant savings by making that switch. And again, like I mentioned, Kami has done a great job of of finding the Dell government discounts and that sort of thing. So that's helping as well, and that's not necessarily reflected in that number. Uh, I wanted to let you know that we did our bid openings on December eighteenth for the highway department annual bids for road materials, salt, that sort of thing. And the only thing that we need to do in addition is as part of the notice to to bidders, we did include included in number eleven, right? What was the name?
Limestone.
I included that, but it didn't go out to the limestone providers. They weren't included in email, letting them know that the bids were open. So we didn't receive any bids from limestone. So in yesterday's commissioner meeting, we decided to to reopen that portion of the bid and notify the limestone providers that the bids were, or the bid process was open so that they could send a bid. So we're just doing that one piece. We'll get that done for our next, hopefully, our next meeting, opening bids. We'll take them under advisement. A pretty short gather after. And lastly, recently I had a conversation with Paula at Community Corrections and the under commissioners and Mark Struven. And we we would like to create a building committee because we recognize what we are asking for that building is a big ask. And and you know, we're we're trying to find solutions to make that building work for for another, at least another decade, ten, fifteen years before we can reasonably do something like building a building. So we we would like to to have a joint committee and and just kind of explore maybe together as as council commissioners, building maintenance, as and even have a community member involved. What what the other options are. If it's not to invest in this building, then what is it that we all that we can all agree on that we should be doing to extend the life of the building? So we're asking that council can select two people to be a part of this committee. And and you know, maybe what we've asked is not the solution. Maybe maybe what we've asked is not going to be how we should proceed. But maybe you could help us or come alongside us and find the right solution. So we'd like two members of council to say what.
Have you, like with the jail construction committee that met, we are you gonna have a certain time a month to meet this or do you haven't determined that yet?
We we've not yet determined when we would meet because we haven't determined who the members are. Once we've determined all the members, then we'll probably put something out like, maybe tell us what best works for you all. Stay aware about that.
Sure. I think it's I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. It was Paul's ideas. Paul is good idea.
She should have brought cookies, right?
I will.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
How how soon are you looking to start this committee or?
As soon as possible.
Can you give us an update on the jail roof, please? What's going on? What the hell are behind that? What the project?
Yeah, so actually, we're really fortunate because we didn't think that the front yard or the fruit tree would be available to get out there. We thought it would be after the holidays because most factories do a shutdown over the holidays, Christmas and New Year, and fruit tree typically goes to those locations because they're shut down and they can get a lot of work done. But they had an opening, a small opening before the holidays, and they came out and removed the roof deck and they're out there replacing. So we're moving along a lot faster than what we initially projected. So I haven't been there in a couple of weeks and the and the meeting yesterday was canceled, so I'm not exactly sure how far along. Last time they were there, they were they were replacing pieces or they were removing pieces and replacing at the same time. They were moving right behind replacements.
Does it look like it's gonna stay on timeframe then?
I think we're gonna be way ahead of time. Oh, you mean like total project? I think that's gonna put us behind, but not not the three months that they initially.
So they've done all section A? Is that the one?
I can't say that they've done it all. Kami's shaking her head.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I I knew that when we were there last, they were at the same time removing and replacing pieces, and they were cruising off. So, yeah.
They've had good weather, so that helps a lot.
Are they gonna schedule the meeting for next Tuesday or are they gonna wait another week?
I believe it'll be another week. It was canceled yesterday because most people were still on the.
Heard some rumblings on Wild Bash County Jail.
I've heard some horror stories.
Yeah, I have two ideas. I I heard they had a roof problem too.
Uh, I think it was a design problem, not necessarily a material problem.
Contractor problem.
What I do. Yeah.
Same people were using.
No, it's not.
I just want, I mean, that's good information to have when we throw something like that out in public means I'm like, I'm like, everybody rest assured that that's not an issue that we're gonna have. I don't know what the issue is.
They actually, they had a, I heard a guy who was counting a bunch of work with the past, but they, for for something else, they decided to hire him as an over rep. And he changed a lot of designs of our Q A W that's the other. They just, it's been trouble. They have problems. But we're not using anyone, being the same contractors or design team on our field and all that kind of use on this. We're in a good place. If anybody wants to see it, let us know. We're happy to take out at the time to see the progress.
On the volunteer side, you you think about switching, will that happen this in twenty twenty four?
The state has to approve it. They have to. It's a process where Bones Center can can object. They can say, you know, we'll change and that goes to a state panel, I believe. That's in here. He explained it really, really well. But am I am I saying that right?
So, yes, so there is an S S A office at the state as a gentleman that is in charge of the process. Contact with him has been done very less because it's such a convoluted process. About eighteen months minimum to do. So the county requests that process to start, fill out some information, send that back to them. Then there is a discussion on that. Like I said, the current provider can object. If there's an objection, then there has to be a hearing. That S S A officer initiates and goes through, and then the county has to present their side of the case for that, and then that decision stays later on. So it is very difficult to do. I think it was set up by Mr. Bo, Governor Bo, back in the day to be this way. And it is a lengthy process to go through. So navigating that in time, trying to be with our view and our center about what that option would look like.
So is there substantial savings or a benefit to warrant the effort for it?
The state determines how much we pay.
Right, there's not savings. It's just I think the commissioner are looking at a different provider based upon current services. I think, hopefully not out of line, but the last twenty years, I have personally heard from county commissioners that they were disappointed with the performance of Bones Center throughout those years. So this is just not these commissioners. It's that the long process.
And when it went down council, it was a discussion every year as well.
Yes, I I think we've questioned why we're paying, I think, this year around three hundred thousand dollars. Why don't we get for three hundred thousand dollars?
Right.
And then it's been lesser amounts throughout the years.
It wasn't an issue there anymore, according to you, because we don't know how our dollars are being spent. So, you know, I think I think that.
I can tell you that it's been spent lightly.
At the very minimum, we we look for a better partnership, and if we're not able to change, then maybe this will increase or or improve our partnership with Bones Center.
That dollar amount, though, that's set by the state that I hear that, right?
Mandated by the state.
There was legislation at the state house last year that would change this and would have allowed for commissioners to make choices in their community instead of being told who they have failed. I believe it's gonna come back up this year, hopefully, albeit the state. I think that we should have choices to market.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Minutes? There is, there is a correction on the minutes. Tamara, I have corrected it on the main copy. Down with the corners, said ten dollars. That's ten thousand. So she made that correction. So, okay, please do it on your copies. Now take your motion, Thor.
Make a motion to approve the correction that you have stipulated.
Third second?
Second.
Second by Jim. Any additional discussion? All for the vote. All those in favor of approving December fifth minutes, raise your right hand. Yes. Any comments from the public? Jim, is it your intention to go ahead with the board appointments and committee appointments today?
We did. We did.
No. You skipped it on the agenda.
No.
No, we didn't.
We went back to it. My apologies.
It would be nice to get two two councilmen.
And I'll take the public comments first. If there's anything, we'll go back to that. Okay, hearing that, two people to volunteer for the committee. Okay, Nick, well. John?
Yes.
Okay. Got a, you're our representatives. Okay, you got them there. Deb?
Thank you.
John and Nick. Okay. Pass the minute. John, do you have any?
I have a question for either Kami or Jen. How do you change the bio on the new website? I'm sixteen years old, got the wrong email address, wrong telephone number. Just coming in with.
Kami, I'll direct this to you also then. Would it help or is it necessary in order to look for prices on laptops or tablets? You know how many. I mean, is there maybe a price difference or?
It's a pretty, I mean, it's not being for the gold price.
Okay.
Joe?
Yeah, I don't know.
No, I'm just looking forward. I'm having a good year.
Thor? I have nothing. Nick? Ken?
Um, I have two things, okay? First, I'd like an update from the health department on COVID and everything else that you hear on news. I'm not sure I believe all.
Everything's going really well until the first, until the week before Christmas, all of a sudden it hit. You had heard from these people having a three week off, things like that happening right now. Didn't see a lot of hospital admissions, didn't see a lot of sickness. The week before Christmas, it just slung it down. I was at the hospital a couple of weekends ago. It was full at that time. I think it was four rooms open. Almost every room had a sign on it saying you can't enter without masking and bounding because of either COVID or influenza. I know the R S V is here now, that one for children, but also the colds. So all three of those respiratory illnesses are significant in what you're seeing right now. According to our epidemiologist for this area, it's hit pretty hard. Your team was on the hospital pool, our respiratory wellness, simply those who have C O T D or other health issues are being hospitalized for that. It's significant. Uh, we won't have one death or influenza in the state of Indiana that was in our district that was a child. But we are seeing influenza A and B in Little County. So it's all here, all right now. On another note, we are seeing a significant issue of tuberculosis in Evansville, which is a street clinic because of, I believe, migrant, people coming in there. So they're having a huge issue. In fact, it's about ten fold of the number. So a lot of state resources are being pushed to that area right now, unless we're gonna see some decrease in activity from the state up here. But respiratory illness is severe right now for sure. We do, we don't have any COVID vaccine for dollar now. We're way behind on that. We have asked for more, forgetting some of that. We do have adult influenza. In fact, Dr. Burkett made the decision to use some of the private influenza to be available. So we contacted some of our facilities here from the county about maybe getting some other inpatient, excuse me, incarcerated individuals. If they aren't, not getting the whole safe area. But yeah, it's significant right now. So washing hands all the time before you eat, especially pushing your face, staying away from the public as much as possible. It's really, it's there. We're not seeing, have seen the deaths right now, but of course, that's gonna, it's gonna happen with the population.
Any additional home COVID testing kitchen?
We do not. We can order some, but they're supposed to be used for other certain populations. I don't know what that means. Well, the county really doesn't have too many of those. We can get some more. We had a few requests of this last week for some of that. Ones that we had had for two years expired after their extended expiration. If it's, if the council or official public to I can look at getting them, possibly even purchasing some. The public, I know they're readily available at your pharmacies and stores.
Then we can also receive them to the post office.
Okay.
They give you four tests.
Oh, wow.
For requests. Per individual.
And and COVID is starting up within the nursing home, health facilities, et cetera?
We've had reports, at least from one facility, Little County, with a COVID in the last five, six weeks. Just a couple of people here and there. We haven't had a huge amount, but I have heard large amounts of COVID in other facilities in northeast Indiana. We have also had a report of increased cases of pertussis in the range of local counties. That's in different populations as well. And pertussis is something that you're vaccinated for as a child and as an infant, and it's a lifelong vaccination. So we really should have us overseeing people that were not born here coming in and bringing that disease effect. So now we're seeing the spread of that in adjacent counties.
Is the COVID test, when it expires, is it expired? Because they had us use expired. So is it expired?
Right, so the the FDA allowed that that to be used for another eight, nine months, and then they said, no, can't use it on that one because of the ingredients in it to make sure that it's effective. Typically, the COVID test, if you don't have symptoms, is about thirty percent accurate. If you have symptoms, then it's closer to a hundred percent.
Expired?
No.
Okay.
Before it was expired. I would use it after it's fired and have any, we're basically looking to tell this, you have symptoms and it senses positive, more likely you're positive. If you don't have symptoms, it's positive, it could be a.
Thank you. Good question.
Another question is, excuse me, to Dale. Haven't heard anything on county wide internet for a while. What are we at on that?
Yeah, so, um. We were looking at sand strategy with.
We were looking at sand strategy with three different providers who submitted the next level connection grant from Oprah is, is due right now. They identified over eight thousand locations for either households, residents or commercial businesses and, and are showing the speeds again. We have to buy is the fact that certain maps show that we are being served. And so they have made the case that we are indeed underserved. Oprah's next level connection comes out and by the way, we'll have it here probably next month. It'll be more of a full update. And, and the federal government announced that the state of Indiana for them, the federal program, we're gonna get eight hundred and sixty eight million dollars. And so it will be a matter of getting our fair share of that. So things are moving forward and we'll probably hear in April from Oprah, what we're gonna get. And then you can expect we'll get some point for that group to be back. Are you maybe ask for some kind of county public match? Shouldn't be anywhere near. A lot of the match can be something as simple as what we're doing with permitting, the fact that we're not the permitting. You've got the highway department working the concert with us. So we will forget.
Thank you.
There, just to add to what Dale said, there's actually a Zoom with the whole partnership, I guess you could call. Next week, I believe, two weeks from now, the sixteenth. And I can send an invite if you guys want to join and just watch and see what's going on. If you guys are interested, just let me know.
Personal experience by Rob is so much better than, than anything else.
I have nothing else. Okay, I have nothing. Hope to make it a good year and so forth and look forward to working with everyone. Thank you, Tamara, for today. Okay, eating some dinner.